All ready? Six o'clock, we will go ahead and get started. I'll lay this in prayer, please. Gracious heavenly Father God, we just thank you for this day, Lord. Thank you for this time when we come together, Lord, and discuss matters pertaining to the city, Lord. May everything that we say and do bring glory and honor to you. Priests all these things in Jesus's name. Amen. Joe, for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the founding of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our December fourth Jacksonville City Council meeting. A roll call, please.
Councilmember Dietz.
Here.
Rupel.
Here.
McClary. McCoy.
Here.
Ray. LeBron.
Here.
Moss.
Here.
Twitty.
Here.
Kenman.
Here.
Mims.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
You were absent.
Okay. We are good to proceed. You have before you your minutes from the November twentieth council meeting. Be familiarizing yourself with those for next time for approval. But at this time entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented to you from the November sixth council meeting.
So moved.
Have motion and second, all favor of accepting the minutes as presented. Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by name? Thank you. In your package, you have the consent agenda. Entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented to you.
So moved.
Have motion, is there a second? Motion and a second. All in favor of the acceptance of the consent agenda, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by name? All right. Moving on down into our other areas. Got a special recognition this evening. Kevin, Joe, whoever, whatever, y'all would like to come start this. Been looking forward to hearing this.
Just real quick, and I'll let these two speak. You guys, this is, those that don't know, this is Joe Stute, our athletic manager, and Cindy from Pathfinder's. We were, and just to remind you guys, in 2024, the autism softball tournament that we do as benefit for Pathfinder's won a regional award. Well, I guess three weeks ago now, Joe and I were at the UTRIP National Convention, and it won a national award this year. And just, I wanted to bring these two up, let them add anything they want to add, but just, we are going to do a presentation to Pathfinder's sometime next week. We didn't get it set up yet. Once we get that set up, I'll email you guys, any of y'all that want to come, feel free. When we done it last year, it was a, I mean, it was a big deal. They, they, they really got a lot of joy out of it.
Cindy, go on.
Oh, sure, I'll go first. Hey, Mayor, how are you? I just wanted to share that this award, Joe's going to tell you about it, but it's about being a part of a community. And I had said something to Charlie Green, I don't know if any of you know Dr. Green, who's the executive director at Pathfinder, but he said, you know, Cindy, he goes, if this thing didn't raise one red cent for us, it'd be worth it because of what it does for our clients. Because they get to come out, they get to play, they get to be a part of the community. They have a ball. I, I mean, I have people all the time ask me, when, when softball, when softball? And so I just wanted to say, you know, we appreciate it so much, we really do. But not just because it's a fundraiser, but because it's something that is a highlight of the year for our folks, and they are so excited about it. And it is exactly what we're about, as far as trying to foster their independence and their confidence, and getting them included in the community around them, so.
I don't know, do I need to? Do you want me to pass it around? What do y'all? Uh, here you go. What this means to the community, to Jacksonville, i- it's huge. And to be able to build the relationships with Pathfinders and these national people that are just fully invested in this, it, it's, it's really, it's crazy to see where we're at right now. Because as much as we enjoy it, Pathfinders, they, they enjoy it. The, the bat companies and the pros, they come out, they look forward to this every single year. And they, their buy-in to this, I mean, it's just, where this is at is just, it blows me away. And it's for the community, and we appreciate, you know, Jacksonville Parks, everybody that's involved with it, U triple S A, they help out a ton. We just appreciate everybody's investment in this, so.
Joe, we'd like to say thank you to you, because you're a big part of this, and you, you are amazing, and we really appreciate you. We're very fortunate to have you.
Joe's very humble, and I planned on saying this after he spoke tonight. Joe's in the driver's seat of this, there's a big group that worked on it. There's fifty, I would say. There's eight or ten that worked tirelessly on it, real close. But Joe's in the driver's seat of this. This is, this is, this award is a testament to him.
Very fortunate to have him.
This is, this will be the third year coming up, like we're doing, like we have. And just the jump on trying to make something like this work was super stressful, because it takes a lot of resources, and we can't do that without the sponsors and the city and everybody else. And, you know, we're, we appreciate everybody that's involved in this.
As somebody who got to go out there and just watch, and not have any responsibility with it, it is awesome. I mean, what, last year, watching the first year to the progression of how it went earlier this year for the second year, I mean, just the jump was phenomenal. And Cindy was right, talking about watching their clients, watching them play, and the amount of joy that they have was just unreal. And it's, it's a, if, even if you are not a fan of softball, and you don't care about it, go out there just to watch that part of it, because, I mean, it'll touch you.
February twenty eighth at two o'clock.
Thank, I was about to ask.
That's the whole centerpiece to everything. We, we stop absolutely everything to do that, and it's just turned into something really special.
It is first class. I appreciate y'all for everything that.
And our athletes absolutely get embraced by all the pros and the teams that are there, the, just the, the, you know, the local teams or the local regional teams that are there. They, they just feel so embraced by everybody there because of that game.
Joe, I, I echo what everyone up here says, what Kevin says, what Miss Cindy say, but there, I, I still think there, there's a lot of people here, maybe watching online, that truly don't know the magnitude of people that come to events because your name is on them. And that is just, that, that is just great. You're bringing thousands of people to Jacksonville to, to showcase what I would consider the best dirt fields in the state of Arkansas, because of our parks department. And you were, you're the most, one of the most humble guys I know. I've read numerous posts that you put, and you will constantly thank numerous people, but the, the big thanks goes to you, and I, I say that every time I, I get a chance to brag on you. And there, these people, thousands of people come because of you and, and who you are, and, and the leadership that you bring. So thank you for your commitment, your leadership.
It's team effort. I mean, I understand that, but it's a team. It's a team, but I appreciate y'all, and thank y'all for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Joe, thank you. Sandy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, please definitely let us know when that presentation's going to be.
Okay, yeah, sometime next week. We want to do it at the time when most of them are there, because they go to jobs and different things and classes during the week, so.
When we get it set up, I'll email you, get into that council, I'll email you.
It won't be long, y'all can come over, it's, it's like ten minutes, and we'd love to have you there. And if any of you want to take a tour of Pathfinder while you're there, let me know.
Thank you.
And can I, I'll add to that. The, the reason things changed the way they did with this event, we actually had it one year before, that we gave money to Pathfinder's. What changed my perception of the whole thing, was it to, if y'all get a chance to go on it?
Thank you all. Next, we've got another presentation, I fifty-seven Construction. Got a couple guests with us. Mr. Birch, you want to introduce them, or just have y'all go ahead and come on up?
I hire smart people. Yeah. Hey, well, thank you.
Thank y'all for being here.
Yeah, it's our pleasure. So Kip Guthrie, this is Brock Childress. I'm the resident engineer, and he's my assistant resident engineer. We work for a company called BGE, but we represent your tax dollars through the Arkansas Department of Transportation. So, we've been here for two and a half years, and we continue to be here, and we're glad to be here. This will be fairly short, but I want to try to explain to you and also give you some context on why we do what we do, and how we do what we do, and hopefully, if you get any calls, they can always call me, that's part of my job. But also give you some information that would help you answer phone calls if you get them from the general public. So, first and foremost, thank you for the opportunity. We're here to answer questions and help you answer any questions that you may have from your constituents. So, as you hopefully know, the, the department has made a hundred and forty-five million dollar commitment to the city of Jacksonville within a two-mile area. Now, that seems like a lot of money, and it really is, we, regarding, we're thankful that every one mile of interstate doesn't cost seventy-five million. However, and I'll walk you through how we got to where we are, we're in a really good place, and I think you'll be happy at the end. Related to, how do you spend that kind of money on two miles, and then obviously as we go north? So, it's your city, you know the impacts, and I'm sure you've gotten a few phone calls. So, when you, when you talk about widening an interstate from two lanes to three lanes, it sounds simple enough, but as we'll show you here in the commitments that we've made to the citizens of Jacksonville throughout this project, that to maintain two lanes of traffic in each direction, as what we currently have, that the wider we make that footprint on the interstate, the wider that goes, the more it impacts your city. The more it impacts John Harden Drive, the more it'll impact T P White. And the wider we have to go, the more we're impacting businesses. So part of our commitment to you, the citizens and the city, was to do as much as we can and keep that envelope as tight as we can. So, how do we do that? When this, I'm going to start by first by going through the main lanes, and then where you're really impacted is on the side road, so give me just one second. So when we do the main lanes, our first thing we had to do is we had to take the northbound lanes, and we had to shift everybody over slightly. So this entangled no daytime operations, except for emergencies. So we went through a nighttime operation of widening the northbound lanes about four to five feet. So that allowed everybody to shift over, so now we have a wider median. So it was grass, and said, okay, well, what do we need to do here? Once we shifted everybody over, then we put in temporary road. We temporarily paved the median, and we're in preparation for shifting traffic around. So as you can imagine, we've made the commitment to, not only you, to the federal highways, that we would maintain four lanes of traffic, two in each direction. So when you do that, at a minimum, you have to have forty-four feet, because lanes have to be eleven-foot minimum by federal standards. So now we start to see this big puzzle piece that has to move to the left, or a puzzle piece that has to move to the right. So, when we do that, now, we are working in the middle. We've got traffic shifted as far as we can, then we do a massive tra- a massive traffic shift. Now, when we do those, we communicate that two ways, three ways, actually. We go through the department's Public Information Office. This program that we're administering, the funds for this program is a part of the Connecting Arkansas program. That's a half-cent sales tax, and we're actually the very last project of that. So there's a second entity, Garver Engineers, their publication teams will notify the public. And then, as we'll mention at the end, there is a direct mail out, or a, a direct email for those, and there are a lot of citizens who are on that, a lot of business owners who are on that. So we're contacting people going, hey, there's a big shift coming, and we shift traffic. Now, as I've stated earlier, sometimes the traveling public, which is not as much people traveling through your city, they don't like the narrow lanes, and they don't like not having a lot of shoulders. Well, neither do we. It's, we understand that's not the absolute safest condition, but to your local businesses, the tighter we can keep that envelope, the less it's going to impact at the end of the project. So currently, we have lanes kind of tight, and you see the barrier walls out there, and we understand that, we all understand, and that all meets federal guidelines. But to be able to reduce those impacts, we got to have, we got to ask the traveling public coming through your community to slow down and be safe from mile marker nine to mile marker eleven, and go, hey, you're in a construction zone, it's going to be tight through here. And our commitment has been, and the highway department has been, that we have an on-call wrecker service twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. If there's an accident in the main lanes, they have a contractual obligation to be out there in fifteen minutes. So our commitment is to get them off and keep tra- keep traffic moving. So, where were you mostly impacted? Well, you were mostly impacted in spring break of twenty twenty-three. So, this was a decision to start early, to allow the contractor to start early. And while the kids were taking a break, it was very well-publicized that we were going to take John Harden and T P White from two-way traffic to one-way traffic. That was a change. We understand that was a significant change. But that was also a change that we tried to do when the students weren't here. We made sure the schools were well-communicated. They had a month, I think, to work through how the new buses were going to go, work through their times. They knew well in advance on how they were going to do that. One of the reasons, the primary reason that that went to one lane, or one way, was it, it eliminated the exiting traffic coming on the on-way. And you know, over there in North Little Rock, over by Target, there's still one right there. That thing scares me. I, I try to stay away from that, because I don't like that. And so, we went and went to every local business, and we were handing out flyers about the one-way traffic. And one of the local businesses said, one of the scariest things, they had seen someone get killed on one of those, trying to exit on a two-way. So, the project at the end, the roads were going to be one-way anyway. So we wanted to make that commitment, make that switch as early as possible, let everybody get used to that and say, well, it's going to be like that for, for indefinitely now. But this project does include a Texas turnaround at Vandenberg, like you have over by Chili's at Main Street. So, that's the very first thing that we did, and that impacts traffic, we understand. The reason that we want to keep that envelope, envelope as tight as we can on the interstate is to make sure that we're not impacting the businesses, or we impacting them as minimal as possible. One of the things you'll notice, for example, on John Harden north of Walmart are significant retaining walls. Well, anytime you see retaining walls, that means that there's a difference in elevation that's tight as we can get it, because you're ten feet down on this side and the road's up here. Well, that wall, they're expensive, and dirt is always cheaper than walls, but we're trying to keep that envelope as, as small as we can. So, one of the things that we noticed, and this is very true, and it's, we've seen it, Brock and I've seen it in other communities, your side road construction impacts your businesses significantly when there is curb and gutter, which you're getting all-new curb and gutter. You're getting, um, all-new, all driveways are getting, all businesses are getting new driveways. So if you only have one driveway, of course, that's going to impact your business. I, I got to give you a new driveway, and I'm going to give you a brand-new driveway, hopefully in the same location, even better than you had before. But that will impact your business, it will. We understand that. So, Weaver Bailey Contractors is our contractor out of Conway, and I, I believe, I've dealt with a lot of contractors, they're doing an excellent job of knocking on doors, talking to people, saying, hey, we're going to be here. We can do this, we've done, we, we've done driveways on the weekends, we've done them on, can't work on Sunday, but we've done them on Saturdays. Some people, as we'll discuss, they have a lot of tra- they have a lot of foot traffic on the weekend. So, they would say Mondays are great for us, or Barn Hills is closed on Monday, so that driveway was done on a Monday. So it's things like that, with that, we're trying to go to each business, learn their ways, and to help not impact them as minimal as possible. I'll give you a couple examples that I would hope that as people who have constituents who may call, I'll give you three examples of the phone calls that I've received. So, we were contacted by one particular business owner, and he was pretty aggressive, that all this work should be done at night. One hundred percent. Hundred percent should not be done during the day, it should be done at night. Well, of course, the citizens who live on, um, T P White north of James, and their back door, their, their houses are right there against the road. Well, traffic, you know, construction usually starts around seven, and if they went to work at seven and came home around six, they weren't really impacted at all. So, there would be one where he wanted it all done at night, and I would venture to say those homeowners were very glad that it was done during the day. One of the businesses that we had talked to was what I mentioned earlier, they have a lot of foot traffic on Saturdays. So doing any Saturday work didn't really help them. But anytime during the day, maybe a Sunday, maybe a Monday, or a Tuesday, traffic really dipped down. And so, Barn Hill would be an example of that, that driveway got done on a Monday while they were closed. And then one thing I would just ask you to consider, we had an elderly lady call us, because we were rubbleizing the pavement, and it was, it was shaking the ground. And she's like, well, it made her nervous, totally understand, but that was during the day, while most of y'all were at work. And if you didn't work from home, you didn't even know we were doing that. And she, it was a legitimate complaint, and we take everyone seriously. But it was the alternative that, is that continual pecking, which would have taken probably three weeks during the day, and would have been extremely loud, and the contractor used more newer technology, and it was done during the day, and it took about a week. So, that's kind of those trade-offs of three weeks versus one week, and loud versus rumbling, we get it. So, my point is this, is like, sometimes it's a bigger picture, and that there's give and takes from everybody. You know, the business owner who's impacted not as heavily, wants us, wants us to work on the Saturday, but wants it clean Monday, or Monday through Friday, or somebody who, say, don't be here on Saturday, I got a lot of, you know, I got a baseball tournament, or whatever. I will say this, and Brock, Brock can say this, we're not going to name-drop. The, um, the citizens of Jacksonville have been very understanding, very amiable, and very patient. And that's not the case in every job that we've been in together. We've been in some pretty hostile environments, and where the phone rings consistently, and some people don't care. But y'all citizens have not been that way, and it's very appreciated. So, real quickly, how did we get to where we are? Side road construction took a little bit longer. The, the department is very thankful for anybody who supported Act six ninety-nine. That is a underground utility act that helped identify utilities earlier, helped them get out of the way, because some, a lot of our utilities are for-profit and publicly traded, and getting them to move expeditiously sometimes is a challenge. So anybody who supported that Act six six, six ninety-nine, we're appreciative. So, anybody who supported that Act six, six ninety-nine, we're appreciative for your support of that. And, um, one of the things that accelerates, and I want to give a couple of shout-outs here to Mayor Elmore, Chief Gibbs, Chief, Chief Laffey, and Colonel Smith at the Air Force Base. The demolition of the northbound bridge is a really good example. That was slated to take a month. And we approached the highway department, the brick contractor approached the highway department, we partnered with the city, the city administration, and the Air Force Base. And the contractor was willing to go in twenty-four-hour operation, and said, if you'll give us sixty hours, we'll get that bridge on the ground. So, on a Friday night at eight o'clock, we started. And before church was out on Sunday, we were done, in about forty-two hours. Now, most of the general public doesn't understand, that's very inconvenient for forty-two, forty-eight hours, we, we totally understand that. What, what would have happened would have been, there would have been jackhammers, and we would have had to maintain one lane of traffic underneath Vandenberg for twenty straight days, for a month, basically. And that every week, the traffic would shift. You'd be over here for a week, and then you'd be over here, then you'd be over here, and we'd have to stop traffic, get a beam on the ground. So, it's those types of partnerships that the department really appreciates. And we hope that you, we want you to understand that while the contractor had twenty-four-hour operations, they had different men and women out there twelve hours a day going, and then they'd roll off, and they'd put another team out there. There were, there were eighteen-wheelers, there were four track hoes. I mean, it caused a lot of dust, but the road was back open, uh, well ahead of schedule. So, thanks for our, uh, our servicemen, our emergency services, who we had alternate routes and alternate plans. That makes a difference, and that accelerates the project significantly. And I would say from the RDOT's perspective, that's a true partnership, city, Air Force Base, sir, uh, the, um, the contractor, the department, and our, uh, those who provide services. What's upcoming this spring, we're excited. The Gregory Street Bridge, that's a brand-new bridge, it's gonna connect from, um, North First Street to the realigned North Bailey Boulevard, we just call it the back door to Walmart, is what we call it. But, uh, that bridge is complete, we are waiting anxiously for better weather so we can lay some more asphalt. But in the, um, that will be a new connection, but, uh, without any significant going through the, um, under, going through Vandenberg, that will be for traffic and walk traffic, both, so driver and walking. The, um, work will continue on the I- fifty-seven northbound, that's not really impacting the citizens as much. The things that you'll see is the bridge is starting already, the bridge will start heavily, we have a, uh, Texas contractor rolling in Monday. Well, he was scheduled to roll in Monday, I think the weather's caught him a little bit. And, um, the Texas U-turn, you'll begin to see that it's gonna start taking shape. And then, um, as soon as, then, then we will be impacting traffic a little, and we always follow our protocols to notify you all. When we hang our final beams, we're on our, we have a commitment to build four bridges, and three of them are complete. And then, late spring and summer, it will be asphalt season. Now, what the asphalt season means for your citizens for sure is that all of our side roads have to get one final lift. And, um, the intersection, um, over at Vandenberg and North First and TP White, it's gotta get torn out and put back in. That's all in the spring, but the good news is, uh, the initial construction date was fall of twenty twenty-seven. The current schedule is for this project to finish nine months ahead of schedule, and Christmas of next year, this project should be complete and open. There are three things that RDOT wanted me to make sure that, um, Brock has, and we'll just leave them here. There's the publication from the communications that, this is a quarterly, and it just shows you where we are, we just passed the eighty percent complete. And then, um, everybody has an opportunity, and I'll give you the website, to join a direct email list, because nobody wants to, I don't go to RDOT's website every day, and they, I, I got better things to do. But you can go to the Connecting Arkansas program, and it, that has pictures on there, they have drone photos on there. And then the last thing is if you go to AR.gov, you can always use the AskRDOT portal. The AskRDOT portal records everything, and you will be responded to. And the AskRDOT portals related to this job, some of them end up in my court, and in my email. Say, hey, what about this, how can you help us with this? And so, it's not just, you're not gonna get just a flagship answer, you'll get a real, you'll get, your answer will be, your question will be answered promptly and with detail. So, that's all I have.
What's that website again?
Uh, well, there's AR.gov, that's the AskR, RDOT portal. And then there's, uh, Connecting Arkansas program, all one word.
Arkansas spelled out?
Yes, ma'am. Sure.
Thank you for the update.
Yeah. Hopefully, I'll see you next year, and that's your Christmas present. Any questions, none?
I do, I have a couple.
Sure.
Um, you said that it should be open this time next year.
The project should be complete.
Completed this time next year, but it was originally slated to be completed in twenty twenty-seven. What is the original deadline?
Well, when it came out, so the, the, the contractor bids it two ways. He bids it with money and time, and then they combine those, it's a, it's a way that the contracting world, uh, um, allocates contracts, that in the fall of twenty twenty-seven.
September twenty twenty-seven.
September of twenty twenty-seven is what, when, when the bids were awarded, that's what he was, that's what he said, is how long it was gonna take him to do the job. So, that's what he is contractually, he doesn't have to finish anything until September of twenty twenty-seven. If he finishes early, there's an incentive, if he finishes late, there's a penalty.
Okay, and, and, and that was my question, what happens if he misses the deadline?
There's penalties, there's financial penalties, I don't know those off the top of my head, but I can get those for you, but, um, they're both ways, if he finishes late, there's penalties, if he finishes early, there's an incentive.
If he finishes late, what does that mean for citizens of Jacksonville?
Well, it would mean that, which part of that would be, he's financially on the hook and he's motivated to finish, uh, depends on what that would do to the citizens of Jacksonville, is where he is in the process. Like, for example, if everything was done except for stripes on the ground, I would say that would be very limited impacts to the city at all. For example, we have done projects where there had, there is a temperature requirement for stripes to be put down, you can't put them down on a day like today. So, we have opened the jobs, we have put paint on the ground, and then when it got warm, he came back and put his thermoplastic pavement markings down, per the contract, that didn't impact the citizens at all. So, it, it's a kind of a hard question to answer, it's a great question. I would say that right now, uh, we're pretty happy that that is a very low probability that he would not finish on time. He's gonna finish on time, he's tracking to finish significantly early.
You mentioned, Kip, a while ago, it won't be too long before the Gregory Street Bridge overpasses is opened up.
Yes, sir.
When, at that point in time, will the, the road, I mean, for us, it's in front of Billy Hall's house, as we know, or behind Barn Hill, the connector to Walmart, will that open at that same time?
Yes, sir. All that will open at the same time.
When will that be?
Spring.
Oh, that's spring, okay.
Yes, spring.
I thought it was December twenty-sixth.
Well, we're targeting that, but as a day like today, there were some, like, today was a, today's a really good example, work got halted today because of weather and, um, well, rain and temperature. So, like, as much as we can accelerate, when we can get three week, or twenty days where the work done in forty-eight hours, sometimes the weather doesn't cooperate. So, today, we, we lost a half a day today, that's ebbs and flows.
And you said they could contact you with questions, correct?
Sure.
What's that contact information?
Well, I, depending upon, I would probably start with AR.gov, or, yeah, AR.gov, and that's Ask Arkansas. Because if it has related to this project, it's gonna end up at me anyway.
Other questions, anybody else?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, Kip, appreciate it, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, just make sure.
Yeah.
Fasten down.
All right, uh, gentlemen, thank you very much for that. Moving on, our final item of business tonight is Ordinance eighteen oh five, creating and certifying tax liens against properties where balance is due uh, from services rendered and/or on behalf of the city.
Hey, I have a quick question on this, is there a reason why this wasn't in the packet originally?
That was on me, I didn't get it to Susan in time.
I was just curious.
Uh, so, now entertain a motion to place Ordinance eighteen oh five on first reading.
Second.
Motion and a second roll call.
Councilmember Dietz.
Aye.
Rupel.
Aye.
McCleary.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
LeBron.
Aye.
Moss.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Kenman.
Aye.
Mims.
Aye.
Ordinance number eighteen oh five, an ordinance creating and certifying tax liens against real properties at various locations within the city where balance is due from services rendered by and/or on behalf of the city of Jacksonville, Arkansas, and for other purposes.
Any questions or discussion?
Mayor, I have an unreadiness.
I'm sorry, what's that?
I have unreadiness, I have a question.
Okay.
The packet that we get on Tuesday, there is a six-hundred-dollar difference, I'm going to assume that some things were paid, properties were paid between the time the printing came on Tuesday, and we got the packet today.
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct, and there's actually three of those. Amelia sent me this today, just because this might have been asked. But there are three parcels, here's, I've got the parcel numbers, and the amount of, of those, if anybody is interested, and it is, and it is six-hundred dollars. It was, uh, parcel twelve J oh six, uh, two zero 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 four thousand, which was the six oh two railroad for Glenn Michael for two hundred dollars. And it was for, I'll skip the parcel number, four oh eight Smart Street, Glenn Michael, two hundred dollars. And then one fourteen Wilson for, uh, JS Cleaning and Management for two hundred dollars also.
One fourteen Wilson.
One fourteen Wilson, four oh eight Smart, and six oh two railroad, they have been paid, so. But yes, sir, that is the, that was the exact, the difference there. Other questions? All right, entertain a motion to approve Ordinance eighteen oh five on first reading, and suspend the rules in place on second. We have a motion and second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Dietz.
Aye.
Rupel.
Aye.
McCleary.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
LeBron.
Aye.
Moss.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Kenman.
Aye.
Mims.
Aye.
All right, entertain a motion to approve Ordinance eighteen oh five on second reading, and suspend the rules in place on third and final. Motion and second, roll call.
Councilmember Dietz.
Aye.
Rupel.
Aye.
McCleary.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
LeBron.
Aye.
Moss.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Kenman.
Aye.
Mims.
Aye.
All right, then entertain a motion to approve and adopt Ordinance eighteen oh five on this date. Roll call.
Councilmember Dietz.
Aye.
Rupel.
Aye.
McCleary.
Aye.
McCoy.
Aye.
LeBron.
Aye.
Moss.
Aye.
Twitty.
Aye.
Kenman.
Aye.
Katrina.
I mean, Mims.
Aye. It's all good.
All right. Uh, Ordinance eighteen oh five is therefore approved. That is our last item of any regularly scheduled business for tonight, is there any new or unfinished business? Yep, Christmas Parade is Saturday, three o'clock, tree lighting is at five-thirty. And, uh, also tomorrow, from ten till seven, is the mayoral challenge bell ringing for the Salvation Army, uh, taking place at Walmart, so if anybody would like to come out and join me standing in the cold for a little while, ringing a bell, uh, I'd love to have you come join me. We'll have, we'll have some fun tomorrow, from ten o'clock, starting in the morning. I'll be there up until about four o'clock or so, because I've got an event at base tomorrow at five. So, but, uh, yeah, love to have y'all come out and, uh, do this. Last year, when this took place, the city of Jacksonville people, residents showed up and showed out for this, and we won. And if you look out there in the cabinet, right in front of, or to the right of the doors, you'll see that, that trophy down there, so. Uh, we'd like to keep it here in Jacksonville again this year, so, anyway. Uh, appreciate y'all, thank y'all very much, go home, stay warm, stay dry, and see you next time.